All right, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's just the treasurer. Mrs. Grassley, can you call it all, please?
Sure, Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Belinda Grassley.
I'm here.
Tom Heak.
Here.
Lori Korniski.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Go ahead and stand for the class, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its role with the routine and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting and the public participation section on the agenda. First up, we would like to make a resolution to approve the appointment of Belinda Grassley as Treasurer Pro Tempore today with Mr. Platt's absence. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cack. There's no discussion, let's call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassley.
Clive Stein.
Clive Stein.
Yep.
Clive Stein. Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
And Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to approve the minutes for the August 18th, 2020 special meeting, August 25th, 2020 special meeting, and September 16th. I'm sorry, August 24th, 2020 board meeting. September 16th, 2020 special meeting. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, call the roll, please.
Well, Belinda Grassley, aye. Tom Heak.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye. Motion carried. First up then is Special Reports, Dr. Kales.
We do, we have a special report. As you know, we've replaced a few people in some very key positions in our district, one being transportation. We had Mrs. Oner here last board meeting. I asked Deputy Rowland to come to our board meeting so I can introduce him to the board and also the community. Deputy Rowland is our new School Resource Officer. He attended Cleveland Heights Police Academy and has been employed with the Lake County Sheriff's Office for four years. Deputy Rowland enjoys working with our youth to educate and guide them to a brighter future. Becoming the School Resource Officer has been one of Deputy Rowland's top goals in his career. He has gained experience in working with children throughout the portion of his career with the Road Patrol and looks forward to using that experience here in the Riverside School District. Deputy Rowland is excited to be here, working alongside Riverside staff. And Deputy Rowland does go by, his name is Robert Rowland, he goes by Bobby Rowland. Bobby?
Hello, everyone. Nice to meet you all. Stopping to introduce myself and tell you I'm happy to be here. Absolutely, thank you.
Deputy Rowland, I've kind of been getting real good reports from him, from our administrators. Very active, very visible, interacts with the kids in the hallways. He is doing some work, or going to be doing some work over at Lammuth, going from group to group, class to class, talking about the do's and don'ts and what the expectations are, and also providing his service to the schools and to the kids. And we're very happy you're here. Hopefully, we can keep it more than a year.
Excellent.
Thanks for coming.
Welcome, thank you for being here.
That concludes my special report.
Excellent, that takes us next to old business. If anyone has anything? I just want to see if in old business we can give an update on how's it going in classrooms. Well, actually, first thing is, I had a question from a couple of community members as far as how recess is going with masks. They've got a couple of people who've said that they've got friends or family members that work in other districts, and the kids in recess have at least been able to have masks off, but that we're not allowed.
Right. I reached out to some of the other superintendents in the area because I received a few inquiries about that as well, and the impression I was receiving from the people inquiring is that everyone else in Lake County are allowing the kids to take off masks during recess. That's not necessarily true. What it is, is what their superintendents are telling me is, if they're engaged in an activity where they can ensure that they're six feet apart, they can take their mask off.
Right.
So I did send out an email to our staff, maybe about a week and a half ago, stating the same, that if kids are engaged in any type of activity, sometimes kids like to be alone during recess, sometimes they like to sit by their friends and talk. As long as they're six feet apart, they can take their mask off.
Do we know that, like, have we been talking to the principals? Do we know that it's happening?
I don't know, I haven't been over at some of the elementary schools when recess is occurring. Best I can do, like I said, is I continue to put these emails out, trying to clarify some things as we move along. And, you know, we're going to have our principals' meeting in not too long. I can check with them, I can even place calls to make sure that they are. I think what's happening is the principals are on board with it, they're telling their staff. I think particularly in the classroom, depending on what teacher you have, you have more that are, you know, convinced they're going to catch something if the masks are off and they have their shields up, and some that are more flexible. So depending on what kind of schedule you have, what type of teachers, it's, we're trying to keep it consistent, but, you know, ultimately, the teacher in the classroom is the one who's using their judgment on whether or not they should have.
As I recall from the discussion on what the, how, what the guidelines were going to be, we did leave it to discretion of the teachers.
Right.
Some teachers are going to be more restrictive than others, and frankly, that's just part of life as well.
Yeah, that's what's happening.
Tradition of laws, and so get used to it, but we certainly wanted to give them that flexibility.
We're trying to encourage them. Like I said, that is one of the reasons why we brought the shields. Is that, you know, it's a challenge anyway to keep kids six feet apart even in classrooms. New elementary schools, larger classrooms, soon as you get up to about 19, you're really pressing the social distancing. We're going to see in my report what the numbers look like in each of the classrooms. Some of the numbers are lower, there's some better in the lower twenties. But it is designed that way to be able to social distance the kids, you know, in as much as we can. That may change a little bit at semester when some people might flop back in from remote back into traditional and vice versa. Hopefully not vice versa, but it looks like it's going to be that way. So I don't think anything's going to change really up in the next couple of months.
Well, it is nice to be driving out of Riverside to see if there's a lot of teachers that have their kids outside and all that, that's been really fun to see how many people are actually outside.
Yeah, yeah. I was out, actually, not too long, math class was passing me by.
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for old business? How about new business? All right, that takes us on the Board of Education Committee and Liaison's reports. First thing is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. Dr. Vasic and I were emailing about it just yesterday, we're trying to get the first meeting getting scheduled. He's looking at starting with Zoom meetings for the beginning of this year, and I think still sticking potentially with mornings. So, once we have a meeting on the calendar, we will let you all know. Next is Curriculum and Programming and Boosters. Mr. Miles.
Okay, no scheduled booster meeting. We did have a curriculum meeting. Unfortunately, I left my notes alone.
So Jack, if I may?
Yeah.
So, so we talked about Chromebooks. We are expecting delivery of 175 Chromebooks in October. And there is a bit of a shortage, so we're going to scramble at this point, but hopefully they will arrive on time, but with uncertainties regarding the coronavirus. It's not guaranteed, but that 750, once it's delivered, will take care of our issues. We are also, the Chromebooks are, you know, have some good capabilities, but they're not as capable as laptops. So we're looking to utilize laptops and provide laptops to the teachers so that they are in a better position to handle online courses or curriculum and teaching. So that, when that happens and moves forward, we'll have a few more Chromebooks freed up that will be able to go ahead and, you know, provide to students. We do, so I may have to turn this over to you, Mrs. Malo, or Dr. Malocher. But, so did the virtual open houses happen yesterday?
So, the first one did. The first one happened last night at Lammuth, and I have to tell you, they did an amazing job. So they created, if you can go on the website, because it's still up, they created a landing page that you can, and it's a huge whole slideshow with the teachers' pictures embedded, that you can click on the teachers' pictures and you hear an introduction to them. You have team presentations that they did, and then they also did live Zoom meetings last night, and they were able to do it in such a way that everything was very controlled. We had no issues. Super, super proud of the Lammuth staff for getting it, like, they were the first up to bat and they knocked it out of the park. So, this Thursday is elementary, and next week will be the Riverside campus and the remote kids.
No, that's terrific. And then the next item we talked about, and I'm starting to take so much time, but we, Auburn Career Center is actually going into the middle school, and they're pursuing micro certifications, or credentials, I guess is what it technically is called, but the first one they're going to try is tape and roll. So it's measuring, basically. And they're going to use Zoom for an instructor, and they're going to do a prototype the week of October 12, which will then hopefully lead to additional type career, at least exposure, experimental or experiential type curriculum that will help get, you know, our students thinking about what they might want to do when school's over. Let's see here, and... So we did talk a little bit about testing as well. So the map testing will take place in third grade in October. And there was a question asked during the meeting whether or not, for example, the ACT and the SAT will be, occur, and the answer is yes, they will. And those are the only things I can remember. And Jack, did you have anything else?
The only thing I remember is that we already set the date for next month.
Right.
Indeed, we did, yes, which was a huge accomplishment for us.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Mr. Heak, Mr. Miley. Finance, audit, personnel, legislative, Mrs. Grassley.
Um, we have not had a meeting for the finance committee. We'll probably have one in the month of, probably late October, early November, because the budget forecast will have to be done. And so we'll have that meeting set. We haven't set the date for that yet. I really don't have anything else again on the legislative. There's a lot of things that are happening at the legislative level, so.
Good, very good, thank you. Billings and grounds operations alumni, Mr. Heak.
So the alumni have not had a meeting, I don't have an update there. As far as billings and grounds go, we did have a meeting on September 16th. And, you know, we covered a number of things. We've, as part of the acknowledgement of, you know, obviously, we're in the time of a pandemic, so we actually have electrostrated sprayers that we're using to go around and try to keep things disinfected. So we have up the clamminess and the ability to, you know, try to prevent the virus. We are, much of the focus of the meeting was on, you know, how we are regarding heat for the winter. We're obviously on the cusp of that. And basically, everything is in good shape. Lammuth has two boilers in place. One boiler is up and running, the other needs some repairs, but will be online before the cold weather hits. And I was happy to hear, because I know last year when I went through the Riverside and John R. on a, kind of a close walkthrough, that the, there were some concerns about the boiler at John R. But at this point, we seem to be in good place, in a good place. There are issues with the heating system overall, but as far as the boilers go in John R., we're in good shape. No issues with the fieldhouse. And, let me just see if I have anything else in my notes. We still have a few lingering items with the new schools, with Parkside and Riverview, where, you know, we've gotten through the warranty period, basically, for a year. We're still working, there's some odds and ends. Something this complex, I don't think it's that unusual, but we do. It's, the problem is, the people who need to fix it have moved on to another project, and getting them back is a bit of a challenge. But it's, you know, my, I have a background in the Navy, and, you know, ships are complex as well. And so when you get a new ship launched and commissioned, there are always issues that you need to pursue. So it's not dissimilar from that. But we keep pursuing that, and there's, it's important stuff, but it's not preventing the links from being open. So, anyway, that's where we're at.
Oh, Mr. Heak, there's one thing I wanted to mention, too, that I was not able to mention at the Billings and Grounds meeting because it wasn't complete yet. But I had an opportunity to go over to the fieldhouse, and remember when we had that concern about the kid sitting on the half-wall near the staircase during basketball games? That fence is now up. And actually, it's a lot better looking than I thought it would be. You know, it's more about function than anything else than aesthetics. But it looks pretty good, and it'll keep kids from, you can't sit on the wall anymore, but the idea that they might fall over. It's a, I'm very glad the board supported playing that up because it was very much a safety concern.
Excellent.
Sure.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, excellent, thank you very much. Policy Committee, Strategic Plan, Mrs. Korniski.
We have not had any recent policy updates, so we haven't had a policy committee meeting.
Coming.
Coming?
We have a meeting with the [inaudible].
Okay. And we have not had a strategic plan meeting at this point?
Dr. Kales and I talked about it today, because I know that was one of the things we had on, somewhere we had talked about essentially putting the strategic plan, a work session in October, right? We were talking about if we do, we still want to push that for, put that on October or push it a little bit farther once we kind of get our new, you know, get an HR person in place and start kind of shifting some of the, you know, responsibilities for that around. Do we want to do it now or just wait a few more months until we know what we're all doing? Does anyone have a preference on that?
I think we should probably start talking about it earlier rather than later so it doesn't continue to be, you know, pushed, at least ideas and [inaudible]. I mean, it might not be finalized until later in the year, earlier next year, but at least we're starting to discuss it.
Okay. I would tend to agree, just, you know, not to discuss what we're going to put on the strategic plan, but how we're going to approach it, maybe would be a good idea to get on the agenda.
Okay, so we need to look then at some dates for October. We've got to pull up our calendars, because it was something that we had discussed having for October. Our next board meeting is October 27. In the past, we have done those just two weeks before, which would be Tuesday, October 13. We want to stick with Tuesdays, unless we prefer to do a different day of the week.
Right now, the 13th works for me.
I'm good with the 13th.
I'm good with the 13th.
I could do the 13th, but the 14th would be better.
13?
Well, I'm just inquiring if the 14th would potentially work.
14th works for me.
Works for me also.
14th would be better for us.
Okay. How about the 14th for me else?
Yep. Okay, and do we have a time?
Do you want to do 6 o'clock? 6:30, 7:00, what do you guys want?
Early than that.
All right, let's do 6 o'clock then on Wednesday. What?
No, you stop it.
Someday that will be [inaudible].
Number 14 at 10:00 p.m.?
That works.
Right, Jack?
Yeah.
Tell me you sleep in a little bit, right, sometime?
Yeah, I'm good for 7:50.
I'm good, I'll take that. That's like all day.
Mrs. Korniski, do you have anything else?
Yep, that is it.
All right, then we've got that on the calendar. All right. That takes us to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kales.
Okay, I promise it'll be short today. I'm sure some candidates we have of our students sign the [inaudible]. Overall, a very smooth start. I have to say that I'm very, very happy and thankful for our staff and our faculty. This year, it was, it was a lot smoother than I thought it would be, considering all the things and all the distractions that are going on. It just is a testament to their preparation and their commitment to the district. Also, with transportation, to be perfectly honest with you, every year we have our glitches. And with a new director, I thought it might be compounded a bit, you know, just because of unfamiliarity. And things have been smooth, knock on wood, it really has. You know, the remote part, we had, there were a few glitches to begin with, but we've worked through it, people have been pretty patient. Students have been great, actually. I've been going from room to room and I've noticed that, at least in high school. I would like to even see a little bit more enthusiasm, they just seem to be in there. And, but they're very good kids, very well behaved, they're complying with what we're asking them to do in the safe, for safety and everything else, so. So, our kindergartners, got their T-shirts, it's a tradition we started a few years ago.
I did miss that day, wonderful.
They're very happy. Just a couple pictures, Buckeye Elementary, Lammuth, they have their shields up, sitting at their tables. Also at Parkside, Melrich, kids seem to be very happy. We have our protocols in place, there's stickers everywhere labeling what everyone needs to do. And I'll get into a little bit more about that, because we did have inspectors here at our Charlotte football game, our last home game. And we had a glowing report, which was very good. Had the hand sanitizers throughout, again, reminding students to social distance, getting their face covered and washing their hands frequently. We also have it in other places where events are taking place, such as the stadium. As you noticed in that sign, a little piece of trivia, if you look at the last line I had to add, an apostrophe after the S, instead of the apostrophe was before the S. So if you peek and look, it's what, we weighted it out.
That's definitely very appropriate that you do that, make that a correction.
Yeah, we didn't want the people coming in and seeing that we didn't have the apostrophes. We're encouraging, again, kids getting outside and social distancing themselves. It's kind of a balance between trying to keep them safe in terms of our safety protocols and being outside. We're trying to strike a balance between the two. You know, and as much as I'm around this building, I notice every once in a while we have doors propped open, and I've been closing the doors and encouraging people to open up the windows. The doors up here are open, but we have a deputy here, that door's often propped open, and I keep on closing it and telling everyone we still need to keep adherence to our safety procedures and policies. Kids outside underneath the stadium, that, we encourage them to go inside the gates, too. Gives them a little bit of security inside the gates. And that's, that's basically it. The start of the school year has been very, very smooth, very happy. Substitute teaching, these are our rates for substituting in our district. What I was going to ask the board, we talked a little bit about it in one of our committees, is about trying to get permanent subs. Years ago, we had permanent subs here, I think we had four. This is a long time ago.
What, for, can you define what permanent subs?
A permanent sub is a sub that reports to work every single day, whether we actually have a specific spot for them or not. With everything going on right now, it's very difficult to find substitutes. It's very difficult to find a lot of different positions. Bus drivers are another one, substitutes. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get subs to report to school every day, and then we will direct them where we need them, and what we're going to need them. So what we thought we could do is through the company that we use, is instead of going through the one to 20 days, if someone's going to commit to us, we would like to try to get them for the $110 a day. We're looking at three or four permanent subs and just have them around and sign them early in the morning to where they need to be. It keeps us from pulling different people and trying to.
It was, and if I may, that was brought at the curriculum meeting, committee meeting. And frankly, even though, you know, there's a $20 difference, it's the amount of time that the administrators and the staff and the principals scramble around, that it's far more efficient to have a cadre of substitutes available rather than having, you know, very high paid people scrambling.
Jack, you were around when we had permanent subs here, we were actually, you know.
Do you know how many subs we use on average per day?
No trouble. It could be 10 to 15. I mean, I don't know, on the old days, I mean, when we had a lot of PD going on, we could have up to 30.
Okay.
You know, so, this, this really does eliminate the need for when we get those calls at 5:00 in the morning. And with the shortage of the individual doing something, they're just not there. You know, so, this would guarantee us that we have a couple of people in the district. I have a call out, just checking right now to see if, generally, after 60 days, for us it's 30, they go to our, onto our scale and our, on our payroll. But in this situation here, I'm trying to make sure they're okay with them staying on their payroll and that we just have them report to a given building every day, and that we will disperse them as needed. So, I should have that answered by tomorrow, hopefully.
Does that make sense?
So at our last home football game, we knew that inspectors were coming. We did send out a late email to parents that are involved with the football cheerleading and band, telling them that we have inspectors here from the OHSAA and that we expect everyone to comply with the guidelines. We have a link attached to the guidelines, if I remember. And the report came back just yesterday, and we did it. I'm so, I'm so happy with our athletic director, our building-level administrators, our parents, our kids, everyone. It's kind of lengthy, but I did want the board to take a look at it in their spare time. We got a, like I said, we had a great report, the away team, there were some issues in terms of their spacing. One of the things that they did ding us on was the fact that in the bathrooms, we only had one way in and one way out, and that we were supposed to have one way in and paying on a separate way out, not the same one. But we can't do that. Bathrooms are what they are.
Right.
There's one door, there's actually two doors, one from the outside, one from the inside, but they're right next to each other. So they would be walking in the same space. I don't know how we would have remedied that. And they even mentioned that they didn't know how we would be able to remedy that. But overall, it was a really good report. We were a bit anxious about it because we hadn't gone through this. Football is not going to be the only sport that's going to be inspected. They have, these inspectors are going to be all over the place in all different types of sports, sporting events. And one thing they did change, I wanted the board to know about, too, on Friday, the 25th, they had an update coming with the headquarters governing athletics. And it was that, teams were only allowed to play one contest per day. Now, they can do, they can have contests with more than one game in a calendar day. In other words, you could probably have a tri-lead or you can have a tournament type of thing. So they relieved us of having only one contest. So, it's another good thing.
Well, this, if you, look at a quick look at this, this does look like Riverside did a really good job with this, though.
They did. And the administrators and the fans, the kids, players, band, everyone did a great job. And I hope I'm not leaving anybody out, but everyone complied. This is one game I could not be at. Mr. Schluck was there and also the building-level administrators.
It was a great game. I mean, it was, it was really one of the little ones.
I just wish we would have won.
Well.
Yeah, you have everything.
Just two other items, these are the final numbers in terms of the remote learning academy that we have. I just wanted to let you see, it hasn't changed too much. If you do the map, you're going to find that we have about 27% of our kids going remote, which is pretty typical in our county. I have this information, we can send it to you via email if you'd like, if you want to look at these, if you want the numbers. And then this is what our classrooms look like right now. You're going to see it's anywhere between like 13 to 22, 24, I think in a couple kindergarten classes. Kindergarten classes in the two-millimeter schools are a little bit larger in capacity than the others. But it's looking pretty good. You know, all this may change in January, but these are our numbers. I think some parents and teachers are happy because the numbers are lower than what they banned last year or two. But it gives us better ability to social distance. And I conclude my report.
Awesome, thank you. Next thing, the Treasurer's Report, which obviously we will skip today. Oh, actually, Jim, I noticed you've been, do we need to talk about OSBA? Was that something that we need to discuss?
Oh, yeah, we do. I think there's a, I think it's on the agenda, isn't it?
It is, it's in the finance agenda, we could probably talk about that if you want.
It's going to be virtual. I think we just need to know if anyone plans on, they're still charged to attend, even if it's virtual. And there's a, we have to know who might be interested in doing so.
I don't plan to.
I don't plan to, but I said I would do the, I would be the delegate, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I know we wanted to do it.
Lori, Tom, Jack, what's your intention on that?
Yeah, not at this point.
Lori?
I had not intended to.
Jack?
No, thank you. I looked at the plan, I didn't, I don't see how we, it'd be very difficult to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
Virtually, I don't know.
Yep, okay, thank you. So Treasurer's Report, we'll skip that today, public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board Presidents, Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers or questions identify themselves. The other topic comments are limited to three minutes. Very large audience today, okay. Takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for a more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove consent agenda items to be discussed and voted on individually. The first up is finance and audit.
Yeah, sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through S. Okay, um, we do need to fill in item B for the OSBA annual business meeting. We need to approve a delegate and an alternate. I, I said I would be the delegate unless somebody else desperately wants to be the delegate, but it's on Zoom, so I figure it won't be so bad.
I'll be the alternate.
We almost put you in.
No.
I did put your name first. All right, so, so we have that. I will be the delegate. Jim will be the alternate.
Thank you.
I, I don't know. I would imagine Gary's going to have to get information for them so, so that we get some insight, I think. I don't know how that will work, but. Um, one thing that Gary wanted us to know is that the appropriations, which are on item C on the agenda, we will be voting on adjustments to the perma- permanent appropriations, but we'll probably, these are best estimates of what this school year is going to look like, and very likely that they will be revised a few times during the year as we have updates for budget spending and various funds, so we just wanted you to be aware of that.
Also donations.
Oh, sorry, yeah, hold on, that's a couple of pages back.
It's on us.
Um, sure, and just to say thank you to the folks who made some donations to Nadine Pope, who made a, a donation to SIDE, and to Kay Deegan, who made a donation to the Veterans Memorial. Is there any other discussion on those items? All right, I will call the roll. Thank you. Um, Jennifer Horden?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel?
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through F.
Second.
I don't have anything from, from.
So it's A through F or?
Yeah, A through F.
Yeah, it is, it is. Then we have a second one.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, any discussion on those items? If not, I'll call the roll. Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Horden?
Aye.
Uh, we have item H, uh, the athletic supplemental contracts to approve. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on any of those items? If not, I'm calling the roll. Tom Hack?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Horden?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Curriculum and programming?
Curriculum and program. Motion to approve the items listed up on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by Superintendent A and B.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No, but just to thank all of our parent organizations and support organizations again for all the hard work they do for our district, and it looks like they've been doing a lot of great things again this first year, so.
I do, I do have one note that there are a few that have not responded yet, but they will, uh, be reaching out again, and they'll probably have their approval for another later meeting as well as our lead-up, which I have that information. I haven't given it to Gary, so.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot.
Thank you.
Okay, good. You can call the roll.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Horden?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to the Board of Education update. If anybody has anything?
I have, I have one thing. Um, I just want to remind people to, um, take part in the census if they haven't already done so, to make sure that you go online to the census website and complete your census, because the district and state governments and whatever do you get money based on federal census counts, and it's, that, that carries us for ten years, and so it's really, really important to do so. So if you have not done that, please, please make sure that you go and do that so that we get counted.
And I just, welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back. All right, well, this might be a world record. I'm going to, um, make a motion at seven thirty-five P.M. to adjourn to executive session for ma- personnel matters, for appointment and/or employment. If I can give a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. Call the roll, please.
Sure, Jennifer Horden?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, very good.